Getting a little bit.
This is no time for that.
Yeah, absolutely. We are here with my five. Pete, did you make coffee?
I did. You want some?
I had one earlier. Brian? We're being recorded. Because Renee just singled me. We're all recorded.
We have a blue light to turn on.
Oh, no light. I'm aware unless there's something on that, maybe.
Is that the microphone here?
Yeah.
Are we supposed to do something here?
Nope.
Blinking, huh?
You want green.
No, that's green. You want green.
Okay, but blinking?
We're already being recorded. Hit the.
Should I go by the wall clock or the real clock?
I go by my phone usually.
You got two minutes.
We had a different clock.
All right. The meeting forward. The recording's on?
Yeah.
Oh, I know. It's like, I know. Like, whose dogs are they?
That's what.
What is that?
It's a coffee pot.
Oh.
It sounds like rabid dogs or something or something.
That's funny. It's the coffee pot.
Okay, it's three o'clock. I'd like to call to order the February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the North Oakland County Fire Authority. Let's take a roll call.
Absolutely. Mr. Gamka.
Here.
Mr. Cullis.
Here.
Mr. Schaefer.
Here.
Mr. Stoffel.
Here.
Ms. Winchester.
Here.
Chief Lince.
Here.
The first order of business is approval of the agenda as distributed. Are there any comments or changes?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Okay, I would like to, I would like to propose a change. We have a presentation by the NACFA Firefighters Association under presentations, and we have no information as to what that presentation is about. And so I'd like to move that to public comment.
I'll support.
Are there any other modifications?
You have a motion on the floor.
Right. So you vote on that, and then if you want to change it, you make a new motion.
That's acceptable. Are there any further comments about the motion which is on the floor?
Why, why do you need to know the content of what their presentation is? This is a fire department.
Because, because my belief is that it's a personal attack against a member of the board, and as such, it's a complaint that is protected by the Open Meeting Act. And if the complainte is allow, is, is desirous, he can, he or she can, can move that to a closed session.
And so that's why you censored me in, in a formal form and accused me of a federal crime I didn't commit in public, and I wasn't offered the same? So you have, you assume it's an attack on somebody on the board?
So, so several parts of your question. First one is, what does this have to do with, with you in the past? If you go back and review the minutes or the videotapes, you'll see that I offered you the closed session numerous times. Secondly, I'm not assuming that it is any type of attack. I have some, some information that it may be. And therefore, since there has been no, no description of what the presentation is about, I think it's in the best interest of protecting the members of the board from an unheralded attack.
I don't agree. I think it should be open to public, and people have their opinion. And that we should be able to engage in that business.
Okay, so, so we have a motion on the floor. Is there, is there any, is there any further discussion? Okay, I'd like to amend the motion that's on the floor to exclude the presentation by the NACFA Firefighters Association, allow them to do that presentation in the public meeting. Is there support for my amendment?
I'll support it. I'll support it.
No, I have to support it. It was my motion.
No, you, you don't have to support it in a minute.
Yes, you do.
So Pete, what, just to keep it.
You can't amend my motion.
To keep it simple.
I can amend your motion.
To keep it simple, why don't we vote on the original motion and then come up with a second motion?
If, if that, if that will.
That will, I think it.
Convince people that.
alleviate a bunch of discussion.
Not, not to mention, I already called for the vote, but another procedure ignored.
So the procedure for calling for a vote requires a two-thirds vote to, to take it to a vote. So we haven't had a vote, and you're called for a vote.
No, because you ignored it and kept going and made an amendment.
Okay, let's vote.
Excellent. I, I, I agree with that, that decision. Can we, can we have a roll call on approving the, the agenda as written?
Cullis?
Yes.
Winchester?
Yes.
Schaefer Snyder?
No.
Stoffel?
No.
Ganta?
No.
Okay, I'd like to move to approve the minutes with the modification of removing item five, the fight of five A, the NACFA Firefighters Association presentation. Is there support?
I'll support.
Is there any further discussion?
Yes. Why don't you ask the people that are here that want to make that presentation if this is indeed a complaint on an individual on this board? Because if it's not, you've moved it for nothing.
Because I attempted earlier in the day to get a clarification on what that was, and it was unsuccessful.
We're sitting right here.
You're in the meeting.
They're right in front of us.
They're, they're not part of the meeting.
Yes, they are.
All you have to do is ask them if it's, if it's, if it's a complaint on an individual on the board. If they say no, then let them continue with their presentation.
Thank you for your input, George. Is there any further discussion about the motion on the floor?
Yeah. Tyranny. It's plain and simple. This way or the highway. It's unbelievable.
No further discussion, but we have a roll call, please.
Stoffel?
Yes.
Ganta?
Yes.
Schaefer Snyder?
Yes.
Winchester?
No.
Cullis?
No.
Okay, the motion passes. The, the agenda is modified. Third item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial, do not require discussion by the NACFA Board, and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion. If discussion is desired on an item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will automatically be moved to the last item under new business. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented or to modify it?
I'd like to.
I would like, oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
Like to pull the one eighteen minutes. And then I would move to.
And put it where?
And put it under, last, under new business. And I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
So F, new business, the minutes.
So we have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda with the moving of item A down to item F under new business. Was there a second for that?
Support.
Been moved by Karen, supported by George. Any further discussion? Do we have a roll call, please?
Winchester?
Yes.
Cullis?
Yes.
Schaefer Snyder?
Yes.
Gamka?
Yes.
Stoffel?
Yes.
Moving on to the fourth item of business today, we have the, the chief's report.
The January run report was in your packet. January, we had a total of a hundred and five calls. Eighty of those were EMS-related. Nine vehicle accidents and a couple of small structured fires that were just either out upon arrival, or we, they weren't very big, and we put them out when we got on scene. We had twelve mutual aid. I'm sorry, fifteen mutual aid calls. We had a total of forty-one calls in Rose Township, forty-five in Holly Township. Total runs in our district were ninety, and total odd district runs were fifteen. Any questions for the run counts?
Is the average response time to priority calls getting larger?
It, it is due usually during, in the wintertime, because it takes longer because of the snow. The back roads are icy and.
Very good. Any further comments or questions for the chief?
I am the one who asked to have the number of shifts, the coverage, and I didn't really want just station three. I actually wanted both stations. But when you say zero, does that mean there's a full crew or at least one person that is covered? Or can you?
There's at least one medic covering.
At least one medic.
Yep.
And can you get, go on a run with one medic?
I'm sorry?
Can you go on a run with one medic?
Yes. Yes, we have additional personnel responding and the second ambulance from the other station as well in those cases.
Thank you.
Is there any report from Rose Township?
Rose Township revisited. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna inform the board on a couple other.
Okay, go ahead.
We acquired a vehicle from the DNR. They have a program that you can apply for used equipments for vehicles that they have in their possession that they're no longer using. You can request these pieces of equipment, and they will make a selection. They have given us a two thousand and five Chevy Trailblazer. The way the program works is they still retain ownership of it. It's still plated by them. It's given to the entity chosen, and we just insure it. And, yeah, it's a, it's an old vehicle, obviously, with a lot of miles on it, but it's in decent shape. And so for, pretty much until we run it into the ground or it's not drivable anymore, we, we keep possession of it and then hand it back into them. So we took possession of that a couple of weeks ago. We're gonna, you know, put a little bit of maintenance brakes and tires and stuff like that on it, and.
We're responsible for maintenance?
We are, yes. Yeah, we're responsible for the upkeep of it and the insurance. Other than that, they still own the vehicle, and we turn it in at the end of our use of it. So we're going to utilize it as a, a number of things. Utility vehicle, a staff car, just kind of an all-around second vehicle to, to utilize. And then also, we are currently this week retrofitting all of the bay lights on station three with LED lights from the fluorescent. That's all.
Okay. Rose Township, do you have any reports?
We revisited the fire mileage. Well, we're gonna put on the ballot. We haven't actually came up with the ballot language yet, but after we voted for the four mills, I could tell that our board was super happy. And then a motion was made for three point five mills at our last meeting. So that is what will be on the August ballot instead of four. That's all, yeah.
Anything else?
No.
Holly Township, do you have anything to report?
Yeah. In the last meeting, in the last NACFA meeting, it was ended abruptly. When it didn't need to be. It was out of a lack of experience by the chair. That meeting could have been a fifteen-minute recess. The authorities could have been called in, and we could have started that meeting over again with the understanding that if anybody was out of order, they would be removed. But instead, there was a motion, there was a second, there was no vote, and three of the members just stood up and walked out. That's a concern, because this department has many things on this agenda that need to be dealt with. And at that time, the chair said he was gonna call a special meeting for the next day. When he was informed, he couldn't do that because there had to be proper notice. No meeting got called at all. That's a very big concern of mine, along with the fact that the continued Gestapo attitude that goes on in these meetings by the chair has caused a situation where I will be calling a special meeting of the Holly Township Board, and the discussion will be the dissolving the authority, because it's very clear that the Rose Township representatives and the citizen-at-large have no intention of cooperating at all. They are running this board. They are running this department. And it's my opinion that it's not going anywhere good. So that is my report.
Anything else from Holly Township? No report from the chairman, citizen-at-large. Moving on to item six, unfinished business, scheduled attorney interviews.
Is that on my plate?
Well, it, it was on your plate and the secretary's plate, but she's resigned. So at this point, we have a list of attorneys. How do we want to proceed?
I guess like a date-to-interview, right? Date and time and invite them? Do we want to do evenings? Is that better for attorneys to?
Do we want to do it on a separate, a day separate from the, from the normal meeting? Or do we want to do it as part of the March or April meeting?
Thank you. I suppose we could do it if they're available, or I guess we should think about how many we're going to interview and how long. So those seven.
Well, we had, we had, on chief's recommendation, reduced the list down to, I believe, three.
So the one that I have outlined in the.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, yeah.
So we had reduced, we had reduced it down to Bodman that we said we don't necessarily need to interview was, was a commentary at the time. And then number two on the list was Fahey Schultz. And then number six was Morris McGraw, and number seven was Wine Garden. So I think we had kind of accepted that that was gonna be our, our list of interview candidates.
Okay, so four. We could do it at the beginning of our next meeting. Scheduled fifteen minutes apart.
Is fifteen minutes enough time to interview an attorney?
I have no idea.
I wouldn't imagine.
Would it only be the three, even though we've got four on there, the one that?
We, we could choose to bring Bodman in, and we could. I was just relaying what we decided last time, or spoke about last time.
To me, it's, we've been using them for the last year now, almost year now. I don't know that we need to interview them for anything.
I don't think we do either.
Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to move to have chief schedule the beginning of the March fifteenth meeting to have the, the three candidates that we don't know very well, number two, number six, and number seven, to come in for, in essence, be half an hour time slots, and try to put some, some time between them if at all possible.
Do we want to do that at the beginning of the meeting then? So we'll write it in as an agenda item as?
As an agenda item, March fifteenth, first item. Is there support for that?
I will support.
Chief, are you okay with doing, with setting that up?
Yes.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion, could I have a roll call, please?
Stoffel?
Yes.
Schaefer Snyder?
Yes.
Ganta?
Yes.
Winchester?
Yes.
Cullis?
Yes.
Motion is approved. We will set up the three attorneys to interview on March fifteenth, one month from today. Next item under unfinished business, the annual NACFA board officer appointment. As of last meeting, we have, we've elected the chair position. We've elected the vice chair position, and we're sitting with, with no appointments or no nominations for secretary. Are there any nominations for the position of secretary? Hearing.
I, I'll nominate myself. I mean, we got, we need to have a secretary. I mean.
They're nominating yourself?
So I'm nominating myself. I.
I'll support that.
Gamka.
So nominated by Paul, supported by me.
Okay.
Is there, is there any discussion? Could I have a roll call, please?
Ganta?
Yes.
Stoffel?
Yes.
Winchester?
Yes.
Schaefer Snyder?
Yes.
Cullis?
No.
Congratulations, Paul. You are the NACFA secretary.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome. That's it for unfinished business. Under new business, we have approval to spend fifteen thousand on tanker one repairs.
In your packet was an estimate from CSI, who's a truck maintenance facility. Our tanker truck needs the water valves all replaced. It's not a inexpensive thing. And so I request, based on the estimate, that the board approve not to exceed a fifteen thousand dollar for the repairs that are needed.
Similarly, we approve the expenditure to repair the truck. Is there a second?
Fifteen thousand?
Fifteen thousand.
Because of, it could be the additional cost, because of the.
Just in case.
The controller pump panel.
Yes.
Modifications. Okay. I'll support.
Any further discussion? Okay, hearing on to a roll call, please.
Stoffel?
Yes.
Schaefer Snyder?
Yes.
Winchester?
Yes.
Cullis?
Yes.
Ganta?
Yes.
Motion carries to make the repairs on tanker one for fifteen thousand dollars. Item seven B is the fiscal twenty twenty-two budget amendments. Chief?
Also included in your packet were the midterm budget amendments. Any, any line item that has been changed from the original approved one is highlighted. I also added in here the SAFER grant that we received, because at the time of the approval of this budget, we didn't have that. There is no overall increase or decrease to the total budget for the year. It's just a rearrangement of cost centers. We have an operating budget as well as the capital budget.
I've moved to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget amendments. Support.
Is there any further discussion about the budget amendments as presented?
Was there support? I'm sorry.
Yeah, there was support.
I supported. Thank you. Sorry.
Hearing no further comments or questions, we have a roll call on approving the budget amendment.
Winchester?
Yes.
Schaefer Snyder?
Yes.
Ganta?
Yes.
Cullis?
Yes.
Stoffel?
Yes.
And Pat, do you have the copies? In case you need them for your note. Okay.
Moving on to item seven C, the fire chief's annual appraisal submitted.
My annual submittal was included in the agenda packet. This was, again, an item that was supposed to have been submitted last month that we didn't get to. It's the same procedure as last year's. I've given you the performance evaluation with the goals listed and my results to each one. And if I felt they were met or not met, and then the board's job is to review those. Any questions that you may have, obviously, can be asked, and that next month's meeting, come back with them completed and for a discussion on it as well.
Any questions or comments on what chief has presented?
I noticed you added a new HR software for the training program and.
Yeah, it's called HR Muni. You may be familiar with it.
HR?
HR Muni.
No, I'm not.
Oh, okay. It's a municipal-type software system. They got all kinds of different topics and little seminars you can watch. It's quite flexible, because you can assign the employees different things to do as well. And they can go on and like do annual harassment training or something like that. It keeps track of who, you know, who's competed it, who hasn't, and so.
Have you had any additional HR training?
Have I had any additional HR? Yes, I've actually utilized quite a bit of that program. From the leadership stuff they have on there to the harassment stuff. There's, like I said, it's a, it's a, it's a program that's geared towards, you know, municipal leadership-type stuff and municipal employees.
Okay, all right, thank you. Still ahead.
Any other questions for the chief? So we bring those in next month as, just paper copies of them.
Complete, yes, complete.
And we tabulate them at that point. Last year, we did it by Zoom.
Last year, we were Zooming, yes.
Okay, thank you for that. Item seven D, under new business, labor union attorneys and negotiations. Karen, I believe you, you added that to the agenda?
Well, to the negotiations, I believe that George was interested in hiring an attorney. I don't think we're ready for that until, you know, the negotiation at the end were about to be served with unfair labor practice, because we've been sitting on this so long. Nobody has, has met or, you know, done anything. I think that it would be best if the, the chief would negotiate at the beginning, then bring it back to the board, and then we can decide whether we hire an attorney at that point. But I would hate to spend money to, at the beginning, when we may not dispute anything that they bring back to us. But I think he understands the budget and the inner workings of the department, and that he should be negotiating with them. It may be another board member, if another board member wants to be in attendance or two. But we need to get on this like yesterday. Because we'll end up in court if not.
So if I can, I want to clarify one thing. I'm not the one that hired an attorney. That was decided, Mr. Gamka felt that. They had the discussion in the Rose Township Board meeting. That's the meeting where Mr. Gamka refers to me as George Cluless in the public meeting, and he was not willing to meet with the officers until we did the attorney. Now, we tried to bring it to the board, and we didn't get a chance to discuss it at last month's meeting, because we didn't get to it. So it's on here again. I did, the month before that, I did say, if we were looking at an attorney, the same department that we talked to in the past out of Brighton has hired an attorney that specializes in this kind of work. And I did mention his name. But myself, I didn't see a reason why we couldn't at least meet with them and have that initial meeting. And I agree that I think the chief should be involved in that. After all, it is his budget, and he is the one that oversees that.
Okay, well, we've been getting, first of all, I did not mean to, I don't remember what you, doing that. I would never do it on purpose on this. what you, doing that. I would never do it on purpose on this, and if it sounded like that, I would certainly apologize for that, because I think that I, I don't remember saying anything like that, and, um, and so that's number one. Number two, I did talk with, um, Mr. Seal. I said I, we could meet, but I was told that we're not allowed to do that, because, um, that I would meet with him, um, just to get an idea, and we're not allowed to do that, so that's fine. I would certainly like to be on any, any meetings that we have, because, so I can get an understanding as to how this is done, and how we can go, and just so that I can understand how the process works, the pros and cons, and the goes, backs and forths.
So, so to clarify, this board did decide that Paul Gampka and I were the committee to meet. So if you're willing to do that?
Yes.
Then we need to make that happen.
Yes, I would like to, um, you know, if you would pick out a time, and I can make myself available, I'd be happy. Pick out a time and contact me, and I'd be happy to meet with you and Tim, and we can do this, because they've been very, they've been very patient with us, and I don't like to, I wouldn't like that. I would not like to be waiting that long, and so I don't, I, just out of courtesy, I'd like to get this process going.
Well, they did send us a set of emails, trying to set those meetings up, and, uh, Mr. Seal, is he here?
I think he's right there.
We're in the front.
Right, but it's, it's not necessarily under their control for being, um, so patient, because it's actually the, the union, what is the union, what is it called? The fire?
Well, that's neither here nor there.
Well, this, why don't you get...
Well, I know, but I, why don't you, they can be as patient as they want, but the union itself...
Exactly. There's, there's probably a procedure of doing this. So if you want to, George, George, uh, pick out some time, and you have my number, just call me, and we'll set something up.
If I may, I would urge the board to reconsider the setup that they've established with, um, Mr. Gampka and Mr. Collins being the committee and negotiating this, and me basically just being an observer. Um, no disrespect to either one of you. The two of you have no clue of the operations of the fire department, the budget, or what it entails for negotiating process, and what they're asking for, maybe asking for, and what we should be asking for.
Right.
And I think it's...
Well, you're automatically a part of it.
He should be the negotiator.
But that's not, that is not what was set by this board. The board set a subcommittee, including you and Mr. Gampka, with me as an observer. I have not been granted any allowance to negotiate.
Did it say observer?
I don't know if that particular word was used, but it was made clear that I was not going to be doing the negotiating, and I think that's a mistake. I also believe that, at this point in time, for these initial meetings, negotiating, that we do not need an attorney.
Well, I, I guess, for clarification, we need to go back to what that was said, because it was my understanding, we're the two from the board, and you're the third.
Well, I, why don't we go and...
Did, did we clarify he was not allowed to be a part of this?
No, he was gonna, I thought, well, I'd have to go back and look at it.
He needs to be a part of it.
Absolutely.
I was under the impression, and I may be wrong, but I was under the impression that I was, I was part of the committee, but not in a negotiating manner.
Right, and I, I need the same thing.
That's why I said, I guess we need to go back to the minutes, because if that's what was put in the minutes, then we need to fix that. That's my opinion.
Well, I don't, I don't remember what was done, but I think we should make post haste and, um, set up a meeting and at least get going on this, because it's been a while, to say the least.
I think it's critical that from day one, you have the attorney present at all meetings from, from the, from the very start. We, we do not have the skill set to, to deal with this, and, and the union is going to do their best job to support the firefighters in, in the way that they do, and they do a great job. Um, but it's important that we have tools at our disposal. And I would suggest that we bring Bodman in from day one. But one of the reasons that, that we selected him early on is because they have experience.
But there's no legal, there's, there's no legal action in a negotiating session. It's simply throwing ideas back and forth and agreeing and seeing what the impact would be. But, I mean, to me, it's, it's, you're wasting money.
I guess my question of curiosity is, when we formed this in the beginning, why wasn't that brought up then? Because we've lost months where we could have been addressing that.
I wasn't present at that meeting.
Well, we were talking about getting an attorney, and at the time, we were talking about, that my recollection is that we were going to use the same attorney that we had hired for the, um, for the, for NACA to do this, and, uh, one thing led to another, and here we are in February. So I, I don't see any problem with at least having an initial meeting and start this, and then bring in the attorney as soon as we can on that. I mean, we're not going to make any decisions or anything. I think maybe we can just go in. It doesn't hurt to talk.
Right, and we don't have a permanent attorney anyway, and we don't know what their skill is. If you're going to have an attorney, it should be a union labor attorney, but we shouldn't be hiring a temporary attorney to, um, to change attorneys in midstream.
Well, and at this point, I don't need, I don't know that we need an attorney for that first meeting.
No.
Because we're not negotiating. We're just getting, we're receiving their input.
I'd like to have an attorney present personally.
Well, I would too, but we've gone so much longer that I would like to at least talk with them. And I know an attorney, uh, attorney that, a labor attorney that we, and, um, I don't know what our procedure is, but, um, I think we could, I, I don't want to push this off any longer.
It should be a NACA attorney.
Yeah.
Um, and then I thought there was some discussion about, I think it was, the attorney that we're using now is, we had some discussion that they are actually labor attorneys as well. Was that not discussed?
It was.
No, they, they have experience.
And I thought that was the reason why, um, we, we chose them when we did, for temporary.
Can I ask the board where this money's going to come from? Because right now, we're already ten thousand dollars over budget with attorney costs. It's not in the budget.
We're not familiar with how to do this, and in the long run, it could cost us money too.
But I am familiar with it. That's what I'm saying. For these first initial meetings, there's, there's no need for a legal attorney to be present. We're simply throwing things back and forth to one another.
Right, there's no decisions being made or no disagreements.
I totally agree. When, when we come down to getting, finalizing things, yes, absolutely. We need to have an attorney present.
There's even the, the part was, are we paying for the negotiations to happen? I mean, that's actually the beginning. Um, we don't have to, so that's...
I'm not sure what you mean. We're not paying for negotiations?
Are we paying the union people while they negotiate?
No.
No. Okay, well, that would be something to, to start. Um, I didn't know we had came to that conclusion, because I think they can get paid. You're saying no.
Uh, as far as I know, I am not.
And I don't know exactly, what, what is your experience with labor and unions, then? Because you're saying you are experienced.
So, basically, the, the employees that are unionized are, are asking for demands. Those demands are not any way, shape, or form out of the ordinary of anything that I've been doing with them for the last five years. They're, they're simply demands that impact the budget based on vacation time, payroll, wages. Um, these, these are all operational factors of, of the department. I've also, since this has come to fruition back in August, that they were going to unionize, have been studying and researching and reading other labor contracts. I've spent probably a hundred dollars, um, doing my homework on this, because I had not had experience as far as the, um, I don't know, the union jargon or whatever they use. But as far as the demands that are being asked, they're no different than anything that, um, isn't already in one way, um, happening within the department or has been happening in the department. I mean, there, there's nothing that I, I'm not familiar with, with any of the demands that are being asked.
Right, and when, at the end, when you get to the legalese, we will have somebody...
And as the fire chief, representing the community and not being part of the union, it is my responsibility to make sure that they are not asking for too much, and, and that I am doing this in the best people's interest. That's what I've always done in this position. It, I'm, I'm not, in no way, shape, or form going to side with them and start giving them all kinds of stuff that's going to impact, you know, uh, millions of dollars to the budget. It's, it's a simple matter of give and take and, and keeping both parties, uh, you know, in, in the best interest.
Very well said. I, I still, given the nature of negotiations, I think it's critical that we have a lawyer there from day one. Where the money comes from, we're going to have to appropriate it out of some fund.
Doesn't the, doesn't the union have an attorney with them as well in guiding them?
Um, again, I don't know if that's going to happen on the first, um, meetings or not. They do have legal representation that they can call for, I, I believe, when, whenever they need it. Um, but again, if we got into some kind of unfamiliar territory where there was some kind of a legal, uh, discussion that had been started on their side, then we would absolutely help anything at that time, and we would get our own legal counsel for that. I don't see that happening. I've seen what the demands are. Again, they're, they're nothing more than operational negotiations that I've been dealing with for years.
And that's a negotiating tactic. So...
I, I'm here as the administrator on behalf of the citizens in the department, and you guys as the board, um, this is, this is my professional opinion on things. You do with it what you want.
Well, I, I agree that you should probably be part of that committee. I don't know what that wording was, and we don't, we don't have a copy of what that motion was, so I'd be more than happy to, to forward a motion that includes you as part of the, the three members representing us. But, uh, as, as part of that motion, I'm going to, to ask that we have our attorney present. They are currently our attorney. They are currently on a interim basis, but they are our attorney. And you guys can vote that down if you feel it's a waste of money.
Well, I don't think that having, uh, legal advice is, is ever a waste of, uh, money, especially when you look at, you know, if we should make a mistake or, you know, after the fact, you, you go and say, well, jeez, we should have done that. I know, I've done that on occasion, and, um, I, I just don't think having the first meeting or so, getting this going, and we haven't, we haven't done anything. Um, you know, uh, we're supposed to do it in December and in January, and I was sick with COVID in January and, and things of this nature. I, I'd just like to start with this and see what we... And we could, there's no reason we can't have the attorney come in or something, I guess, have, I mean, for a couple, it's not very much. It'd be just a few hours, I would think.
Hundreds of dollars.
So, um, yeah, I was always un, under the impression that we would have a labor attorney present. Personally, uh, we did have a slight discussion about that when we talked about hiring a temporary.
So rather than continue to regurgitate this, are you going to actually make a motion?
I'm waiting to see how this develops, George.
Well, everybody's...
Would you like to make a motion?
No.
Okay.
It doesn't matter what we motion. It won't matter anyway. It needs to come from that side. Any motion that's made over here never goes.
Because all of the motions are voted on a geographic basis only, not on the merits of the, of the...
For the most part, you're right.
Of the item before us. This has nothing to do with geography. This is a question of union negotiations and experience with union negotiations.
Rose Township took the authority to their board and killed it. They usurped the power of this board for...
We're going to have a history lesson, or are we going to talk about lawyers and union negotiations?
You brought it up. I asked you if there was a motion.
You brought it up. I have a motion. My motion would be to, um, set up a meeting with the, uh, firefighters and union with, um, the chief part of our negotiating with Paul and, um, George with an attorney present from Bodman, Bodman, what is it?
I second that.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion on the motion?
The only question was, how are you going to pay for it? Chief, I already said we're ten thousand dollars over budget.
I guess that'll come out of the budget.
If nothing else, we'll just go back to the townships, and the townships will have to pay fifty-fifty.
No. I guess we could do that, but, I mean...
If it's important to do, I mean, if it's important, if we feel it's important, then we should, um, be willing to pay for it. It's, you're not going to have someone come out and, um, and, uh, work and not, and not get paid. I mean, so if it's important, then we're going to have to pay for it. If it's not in the budget, then we have to go back to the townships, and we're going to have to split fifty-fifty on it. I don't see where, for a small amount of money that we're talking about, where the risk-reward ratio's pretty good, um, I don't see, I don't have any problem with it.
I don't see why you can't just do the first one and make that determination after the first one, because I think you'll find you don't need the attorney there for the majority of it. So it's a waste of money.
I think you'd be hurt, but to find anybody who's involved in union negotiations would recommend having any meetings without an attorney present. Any further discussion? Do we have a roll call, please?
Schaefer Snyder?
Yes.
Stouffer?
Yes.
Winchester?
No.
Gampka?
Yes.
Collins?
No.
Okay. Who, who is going to set up the meeting? How does this now proceed?
I can reach out to Mr. Seal. We have, we have the initial email.
Okay. Very good.
And Mr. Gampka's part of that email, so it will be, and if the chief isn't, I'll make sure he is.
Perfect. Um, any other...
Before you go on to eat, I just want to state, you have just passed a motion on an unfunded mandate. Go ahead.
I have a question.
Do you want to make a motion, George, to, to solve that problem?
I don't have the solution. I voted no on that motion.
I have a question in negotiations, because, you know, I've not, I've never done this either. Um, can people sit in on the negotiations or are negotiations closed? Do you know?
I do not know.
Okay.
I think they're closed.
Okay. Something, I guess, um, if you guys wouldn't mind asking, or I guess we can ask the attorney as well. That's all.
George, can you get an answer on that?
Yep. I mean, obviously, they would be non-participating, but just if they're too view or listen, I don't know. This might...
Does anyone want to make a motion regarding the funding of the attorney?
I make a, a motion that we go back to the townships and have them, um, pay, um, appropriate half of, half to each township, and to pay for the ten thousand dollars and any of the other, um, monies that are incurred.
Are you saying up to ten thousand dollars?
No, for whatever it is. I, I heard there was ten thousand dollars that was unfunded, and there'd probably be another two, three thousand, so up to, um, say, what, let's just say fifteen thousand dollars.
Didn't we just amend the budget?
Well, we can amend it again.
I believe that's the...
Any change to the budget has got to go before the two townships to get re-approved if it's more than the original budget approved.
Right. And I think Rose should pay for it. All the attorney expenses up to date have had, had to do with Rose Township. Holly shouldn't have to pay for that.
I do not have a second. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second and support?
What's the motion?
To go back to each township and have the pay, um, attorney pay, uh, pay appropriate... Pay appropriate money up to $15,000 for attorney fees.
Each or jointly?
No, no, jointly. So it'd be $7,500 to Rose and $7,500 to Holly Township.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay, I'll second that motion. Is there any further discussion? Could I have a roll call, please?
Gampka?
Yes.
Stalfour?
Yes.
Colas?
No.
Winchester?
No.
Schreiber Snyder?
No.
Are there any further motions regarding the, the funding of the attorneys? Okay, hearing none. We move on to item seven E under new business, a discussion regarding creating board policies and procedures. Who put this on the agenda?
You asked for it to be put on the agenda last month.
Okay, so this is in regards to everything about our rules and procedures, what's required by our bylaws that they have the rules and procedures, and we haven't had one for the last 20 years. Is that the subject matter this is about?
Yes. I think it was brought up, but in some of the discussion we had at the meeting prior to that, that as far as asking for the attorney to be present, and that was one of the things we were talking about, how that would work. As far as the board, I believe the, the discussion was two board members, but we don't have a policy. So at that time, with the attorney, he suggested we come up with some policies.
So is there any interest by any members of the board to actually do this?
I did reach out to Chief O'Brien with the Brighton Area Fire Authority, asking if they had anything similar to that. He said they had some, and he would get those to me, but I haven't gotten them yet.
I think that's a good idea to look at what other board policies are. We could even have an HR person do something for us. So I guess we'll wait and see what, keep it on the agenda. We're not going to make anything up today, right?
We'll keep it in the agenda and when I start getting information, I will funnel it back to the rest of the board.
Are you going to try to reach out to any others that may have a similar situation?
I was...
Brighton's the only other authority.
Well, it's not the only option. I was just hoping that I wouldn't have to go farther beyond that. But if I, if I do, I can, I'll, I'll wait and see what he gives me and if it's not...
Be interested in seeing what they have.
Yeah.
Okay. We will keep that under unfinished business going forward. Item seven F is now the approval of the minutes from the January 18th, 2022 meeting. Are there any comments about the minutes?
Karen has something for the minutes, right?
George? Oh, he has something too, right?
Yeah.
Well, go ahead, George.
Well, yeah, there's a couple of issues. And, and I realize, Pat, you weren't here. So that makes it difficult.
He had COVID.
No, I understand that. So did Paul, but he was here.
I was older, right?
Paul gave his meaning, so...
Yeah. So...
Paul was following, following, following the guidelines. So the minutes.
At least.
Well, I have, yeah, I have a problem with the, the board appointments because there's no motions.
That's what I was trying to find.
Right, right here. So without any motions and votes, there was nominations, but not any approval by the board for those appointments. There was no motions.
I thought there were.
Well, it, it referenced that Mr. Stalfour and Mr. Colas were nominated for the chairperson and I declined. Well, I didn't decline. I declined on the vice chair. So there was no vote there. But my bigger concern was the way that the meeting is labeled as ended. It says, why don't...
It's on the page.
Oh, it's this. It says, why do I keep losing the last page? Sorry about that. It says after several outbursts from the public, it should say, but in this case, it says, Mr. Stern, several warnings by the chairperson to be orderly during the meeting. Meeting was abruptly adjourned. It was moved by Schneider, seconded by Gampka to adjourn the meeting. It then needs to say, no vote was taken. They just stood up and left.
There was a vote.
There was a vote. There was a vote taken.
So then why isn't the vote represented?
It was an I vote.
Because the secretary quit.
It was an I vote. It was not a...
That is not the case.
Well, there was no no vote.
There was no...
We never got a...
We never got a...
Wait a minute. If there was an I vote, there was no discussion allowed because had discussion been allowed, I would have suggested that we simply recess for 15 minutes. Call in the authorities. We have the state police here today. We could have waited for them to get there. As soon as they got there, we could have started the meeting again. But that opportunity wasn't afforded. If you took the vote, then you took it without discussion. If you took the vote, you got your three yeses and walked out the door because there certainly wasn't an opportunity for a nay vote.
So are you calling into question the accuracy of the minutes or are we talking about the procedures and what was followed?
I'm talking about the accuracy of the minutes. Moved by Schneider. All, all it does is say seconded by Gampka to adjourn meeting. That's, it doesn't reference the vote. It doesn't reference what happened.
Well, I've got Mr. Stern, you know, yapping and I couldn't hear what was going on. So...
Pat, I'm attacking you. I have to have the terminology.
So, so the Roberts Rules of Order says that a motion to adjourn does not require a second, is not debatable, is not amendable, and requires a majority vote to pass. We did all of those things.
We were in the middle of the meeting though. When it gets to adjournment, I agree with that, but not when it's in the middle of the meeting.
Okay. Again, it's Gestapo rule, so...
No, it's Roberts Rules of Order. Very, very clear. At the time, we had a voice, we had a voice vote and...
It does not offer any discussion.
On adjournment, it does not.
The factor matter is you stood up and you left before the agenda was completed.
There was 11 interruptions and five times Mr. Stalfour asked it to not continue.
So I do, I do think it's important that, thanks for pointing that out, George, that the, the move by Schneider, seconded by Gampka to adjourn the meeting, we then had a voice vote and the voice vote carried. So if you would add that to the, to the minutes, that'd be a more accurate representation of what happened.
And I don't believe George and I even knew what happened until you guys left.
If you recall, the table was being violently approached by members of the public at the time.
It was not violent. He was not violent.
Actually, what I remember to be precise was he apologized for calling you a clown and declared you a buffoon.
He was not violent by any means.
Are there any other changes to the minutes? Do you want to make any changes to what you brought up before, Karen?
No, it doesn't matter.
The best I could do with what I had to work with.
Well, it was just, it was a cluster, the whole nominating thing. You motion, you motion to, to appoint somebody and you take a, a roll call on both. Neither of that happened. It was, you couldn't even keep track of what was going on.
Some of you couldn't keep track of what's going on. That's correct. Are there any other changes to the minutes? I move to accept the minutes as amended.
And what is the amendment? I'm sorry.
The amendment is adding a line in the last chunk under German where it says, moved by Schreiber Snyder, seconded by Gampka to adjourn the meeting, to then indicate that we had a voice vote that carried the motion. Is there a second?
Support.
Could we have a little roll call, please?
Stalfour?
Yes.
Schreiber Snyder?
Yes.
Gampka?
Yes.
Winchester?
No.
Colas?
No.
Okay. That concludes the new business section of the meeting. It's time for public comments. If you could please leave your comments to a three-minute limit.
Mr. Chair, we've never stricken anybody a three-minute limit.
You don't have that here?
You got mine.
All time world, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is PJ Kravitz. I'm the vice president of the North Oakland County Firefighters Association. Those of you not familiar with our association, we're a benevolent organization dedicated to bettering the community by promoting community risk reduction throughout the entire fire district, supporting at-risk citizens by donating to organizations such as the Holly Area Youth Assistance, Holly Little League, and various others. In addition to serving the community, we provide assistance to our fellow firefighters in times of need. We're funded by voluntary monthly contributions from the firefighters as well as public fundraising events throughout the year. The vast majority of our association members are paid-on-call employees who have careers outside of the department. But nonetheless, we're extremely vested in the department, make time to graciously serve the residents of Holly and Rose Township, and truly love what we do and for whom we do it. Over the past few months, there has been considerable discussion amongst the association members regarding the action of the fire board and concern of whether or not there will be a continuation of the fire authority. These discussions came to fruition during our general membership meeting, January 19th of this year. At that time, it was decided that as a unified voice, the association needed to share with you all what we see to be a major issue within the fire board as well as a plan to remedy it. The sole objective of the association is a continuation of the fire authority through the two townships, returning to a working relationship and planning and problem solving becoming the norm within the fire board. The letter I'm about to read is the culmination of that meeting in January and how we, the North Oakland County Firefighters Association, best see fit to achieve our goal of preserving the fire authority. The North Oakland County Firefighters Association hereby resolves, whereas a vote of no confidence is an alternative method to bring forth serious concerns of public safety and mismanagement to the public while still promoting uninterrupted, dedicated service, yes such services are vital to the welfare and public safety of the residents of Holly Township and Rose Township. And whereas, by a unanimous vote of the firefighters who belong to the North Oakland, Oakland County Firefighters Association, we believe that this no-confidence resolution is but one of those very limited options available to promote those purposes. And whereas, and listed below, are reasons why the membership of the North Oakland County Firefighters Association have no confidence in the North Oakland County Fire Authority Board of Directors' Chairperson and Citizen-at-Large, Peter Stalfour. The chairperson, citizen-at-large, through both informal and formal processes, has routinely undermined the fire authority through parliamentary maneuvering, information suppression, covert intimidation, creating an environment contrary to the forward-looking management style needed to address the challenges facing our fire department. These include: supporting, funding, and budgeting decisions that have undermined the morale of the firefighters and compromised the safety of the department and its members; falsely accusing another board member of a federal crime; implementing actions to suppress spontaneous input from officers during board meetings; excessive and unprecedented requests to utilize legal counsel resulting in thousands of dollars in legal fees; allowing infighting and petty grievances amongst board members which threaten the ability of the two townships to govern together in a responsible way to ensure the continuation of the authority as an ongoing fire district; and showing to have a general disregard for the sanctity of the democratic process. The legal definition of a citizen-at-large, I quote, is "a person who does not represent a specific organization and is a resident of the member municipality." Unquote. As the chairperson and citizen-at-large, Peter Stalfour has been appointed to the Rose Township Zoning Board of Appeals. He now concurrently holds a formal position for one of the townships, which diminishes his independence and as such, no longer meets the intent of a citizen-at-large. Whereas the reasons for this vote include: lack of leadership, bullying of fellow board members, failure to respond to firefighter and citizens' concerns, fiscal decision-making priorities, the appearance of biased support of Rose Township motions, and lack of overall concern for the well-being and continuation of the fire authority. The members of the North Oakland County Firefighters Association believe that chairperson, citizen-at-large, Peter Stalfour should resign immediately and the process for replacement be started as such. Our goal is not to create acrimony or compromise the safety of our communities, but to share our concerns so we can improve the department and provide for the continuation of the quality of service we have been delivering to the community and which they expect and deserve. Despite this crisis, the North Oakland County Fire Authority firefighters will continue to stand strong in protecting life and property and remain committed to the public we serve. Furthermore, as many members of the North Oakland County Firefighters Union, IFF Local 5346, are also members of the North Oakland County Firefighters Association, the members of Local 5346 do abstain from the vote on this motion that creates this resolution. The membership of the union would like to remain neutral in this matter.
Thank you for that. Are there any other public comments?
Thank you. President of Rose Township, past 30 years, just to meet a couple items. Several items for the board's attention. A recent proposed tax bill is approved by Rose Township Board, which is based upon a threat prepared from the authority's management, requesting a $970,000 contribution each for the first year and, and 4% increases thereafter. This is, this is a $120,000 increase over the previous, a 14% increase. Just to clarify that the, the, all, all the members of the fire authority and the board understand what Rose Township has done and what we're, we're acting on it. To me, as a, as a taxpaying citizen, that's your budget for the next six years. Additionally, one of our township board members recently read and submitted a statement, letter, memorandum quoting, "Negotiation will be the new format. Union will add $150,000 to the budget, the fire authority budget. Have negotiations already been done with a done deal?" Now, in summary, yes, you were all naive about union negotiations. Let me premise this. First of all, when a union gets involved in a professional organization, it's an indication of poor management, period. The manager already mentioned that, that all these issues, if, if it is $150,000 or half, where that number came from, I don't know. He already said that these are just normal operating issues that could be solved. So why haven't you, why, why wasn't your management previously solving? So therefore, as we said at the previous meeting, I was there. It was recommended by the, the co-president of this union that, that the way to proceed was to appoint two members of board members to start negotiations. And, and I recall, the supervisor of Holly Township and our treasurer from agreed to perform that function. Therefore, if this is a motion, why haven't they met proceeded? So as a taxpayer, I'm asking, okay, you two guys are supposed to get started. Get started on it. My point is, in summary, is what, if, if it's already been $150,000 they're asking for, maybe the deal's done. In summary, what I'm leading up to, everybody should keep their damn mouth shut if you're starting negotiations. Thank you.
Yes, please.
Yes, good afternoon. Pam, Lisa, Holly Township. And what's happened with the board since last fall has been extremely disturbing. I don't feel that for some of you, you are actually putting the agenda of the residents of Holly and Rose Township to your best interest. I'm asking that the chair, Peter Stalfour, step down because of your unprofessional behavior on this board. For one reason, I don't know why, when you felt there was an issue over a mail being delivered, you couldn't have been professional enough to have just walked into Karen Winchester's office and approached her with her and asked her why. Because it was still a letter that was public knowledge. Furthermore, we now have extensive lawyer bills, lawyer bills that I feel are unwarranted. I question some of the reasons why you've gone into special meetings. I've questioned some of your decision-making. And I know for a fact that these lawyer bills, they're now well over $15,000 and growing. But again, tonight, you're still asking for more lawyer representation. I mean, what's probably already been spent could repair your fighter tanker one. I do have a lot... I, I do have a lot of really deep concerns about this. I would hate to see this board dissolve. I mean, if you think about a regional authority, what it does for a community, it cools together resources and knowledge and men and firefighters, and it really is for the best of the communities. And why it can't work now, I only feel the reason why it can't is because of your personality conflicts, because you're not sitting down and negotiating. What you said about budget and money, if there is issues of budget, have you resolved? Have you taken a look at your budgets as to actually where you're spending your money? And how those budgets have changed over three or four years? I had a conversation with Paul Gamble one night at a social event, which left me very, very concerned about exactly what you are doing on the board, and why you actually, why you feel your fire chief is not doing his job, why he's spending too much money, but you have never seemed to come out and really look at those questions and look at those concerns. This is, this is, is really a concern. When you think about the residents and the people of Holly and Rose, we need firefighters, we need the MTs, we need all of this. And is it costly? It is costly, but I am asking you to come together on the board. I am asking that the, that the bills that have been occurred, based on what I feel are unwarranted charges, be reimbursed by Rose Township to the knock for budget, and I am asking that you, Peter Stouffer, step down. Thank you.
Any further public comments?
Sandy Villarreal, Rose Township, just a comment on the attorney fees. I would just like to say that with better management, a lot of those, excuse me, I work next to the fire chief, and I'm here to help build this fire department, and I have a vested interest in it, okay? So, I'm glad to hear it, because the fire chief is now looking at some HR training. I think that could have avoided a lot of the lawyer fees that we have had. That's, this guy would like to say that. And then I think a lot of the animosity and the problems with the board, from what I have seen, because I've watched this for many, many years, is Holly Township's having a problem not having the majority on the board. For everybody that has said, on social media or whatever, it's not fair, Rose Township has three on the board, and Holly Township only has two, for many, many years, it was the other way around. You guys should know. Yeah, just don't be so bummer.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Yes, sir?
So just sitting back and kind of listening to these last meetings, watching them on YouTube and everything else, because of the timeframe, it's hard for me to get here. Something that we, as in this group that's here tonight, sees is arguing, that's it. There's nothing that pertains to us. It's lawyer fees, it's what are you guys getting from us? Or what is it we're trying to take from you? It's never, hey, what are we doing as a board to support these guys? You know, do we have the proper tools that we need to do our job? Do we have the right ambulances to be able to save people and to provide to our citizens? So just take us, I want to take you down a little path and just kind of look at putting yourself in our shoes. Have any of you done CPR on a doll? We have. Have any of you ever done CPR on a child? We have. Have any of you ever been woke up at 3:00 AM and expected to perform at 100%? We have. Have you ever arrived at a car accident to people yelling and shouting at you to save their loved one? We have. Have you ever pulled an entire family out of a house fire that did not make it and died of their injuries? We have. Have you ever went into a burning house not knowing if you will come out to see your wife and kids? We have. Have you ever put your life in danger for another human being? We have. Have you ever cried yourself, hiding in a corner after not being able to save a stranger's life? We have. Have you had sleepless nights because of nightmares from the horrible things that we see? We have. To put a little more perspective on Holly Township leaving us, Rose Township has 10 firefighters. The 10 of us cannot run a fire department. We cannot provide the service to the residents of both townships with 10 people. We can't do it. We can't do it without the resources, it's impossible. The route that these guys are going to take is gonna put a huge burden on everybody here. Rose Township gets nothing from the services of our taxes, other than paying the township board members. There's no services, we don't get trash, we don't get water, we don't get nothing, you get a fire department, and ENTs that are willing to kill themselves or die to save you. You guys don't give two shits about any of it. All of it's been political, that's it. That's all I got.
Any further public comments?
I'm trying to think about it. I've been thinking about the request for attorney fees. There are a couple members of your board, mostly on the Rose Township side, that constantly request an attorney be present at every discussion, at every talk, at every question, and they don't come cheap, they come at a fee. That is telling me, as a person of some intelligence and education, that the people requesting this attorney have no ability to discuss things, no ability to make a decision, no ability to have confidence in themselves to get along with their fellow members on the board, to at least come to a place to where, now we're at the point where it's a legal matter, let's call in and see if this is even legal. If you need an attorney just to say, "We need to get a room together and have a meeting", you have no clue what you're doing. And mostly it's at the chairman, but some of it's at the other board members, too. If you have to have an attorney for everything, you don't need to be up there. You need to resign, get off, get a new board, get somebody in here that at least has the capability of having a discussion that may come to a decision that has to be analyzed by an attorney. Not the first time you meet and say, "Hey, my name is union, my name is board, and we're here to discuss something, and we haven't even talked about yet." They're going to be collecting $500 an hour just to listen to you guys argue. Is it worth it? Do you really want to, are you serving the community? And Mr. Stouffer, you've been the chairman, you're asking for the attorneys all the time, and you don't care where the cost from. You don't pay any of the cost. You're not an elected member, you have no accountability. Go back to the township, take it out of the budget. You take it out of the budget, tanker doesn't get fixed. Tanker doesn't get fixed, it doesn't come to Miss Diane's house when it's on fire. That's what you're saying. You're saying you don't want to protect the community because you want to pay an attorney because you can't make a decision. That's all I have to say.
Further public comment? Go ahead.
We got an example just tonight about these four here. They can't get a grip long with anything. He wants to spend money like a drunken sailor, he doesn't care about the money. Gamka, one minute he's calling attorneys cockroaches, and the next minute, he wants to spend money on those cockroaches. So, before us, we have four township liars. You have some unbelievable nerve and inflated sense of yourself importance when all of you end up a meeting, end a meeting, and go home while there is unfinished business on your agenda, items, and firemen and residents to be responded to. What a bunch of liars. Diane is a fired fireman. She has been lying about it for 12 years. Gamka says, in public meetings, he does not care about laws, he goes by his feelings. Poor stupid Walls thinks by not including my comments in the minutes, she has performed a loyal service for Diane. YouTube records and shows all the lying omissions. Diane had her Clemis access removed. In spite of her kicking and screaming, Diane lied about her need for Clemis access, full of personal information and HIPAA-regulated and private medical information on both township residents. Peter, 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 today would be a better day for you to take your bat and ball and run home crying than last month. You are a bully and a liar, and have a year of proof, we have a year of proof. This vote will follow you every day for the rest of your life, in employment, in business, in the internet. I told you repeatedly, you never listen, as with Roberts Rules, you just lie and make up your own BS. There's a small bit of comfort in this extremely damaging, this is extremely damaging to you, Peter, as you intentionally did in your lies about Karen Winchester, and the financial costs to you are just beginning. I told your accomplices, and they walked away laughing. At one recent meeting, you said you were confused six times, and you don't know if you are a township official or just a citizen. That's been answered, you are nothing. If Diane, Gamka, and Walls want to save themselves, they will distance themselves from you, or there will be no chance of reelection. As far as your fantasy three-minute rules, it doesn't exist in the Articles of Incorporation. You just let your fan club stumble on for six minutes. Peter, you pompous buffoon, you have been neutered.
Are there any other public comments?
I don't really make that money. I've seen people try, but that's just point about attorney fees. Hey, you guys, you asked for a union, you asked for a union because you couldn't get, personally, you couldn't get good control for the management department. Hey, let's make it, when you ask for a union, you better have somebody else there to mediate and to get things straightened away. So, when it comes to the attorney fees, you better CYA, because you, because your, your main national union is going to defend you well and come back and counter, counter-slay against our, our, our authority of our townships. Thank you.
Are there any further public comments? Captain Hill?
So the comment I would like to make is just to reiterate that the vote of no confidence that was put up here by the North Oakland County Firefighters Association is not the North Oakland County Firefighters' chair. And I thought I was making very clear that the members of the union abstain from that vote, remain neutral. Maybe there was something else that was said that I didn't understand, that may make some people think the union's filing no confidence, and that they gotta look back. I, I could be mistaken, but I just want to make it clear. The Firefighters Union represents all full-time members below the rank of fire chief. That seemed to be confused in the past. I hope everybody understands that. And the individuals that signed onto the vote of no comments, they're not full-time employees. They're people that dedicate their time outside of their family and their full-time job. I'm very upset. Thank you for your time.
Are there any further public comments? Okay, hearing none. The meeting is adjourned as of 4:23. Officer? Officer, would you please, please come up here, please?
I would just like you to hear my presence, this gentleman is threatening me in the face, and I'm a little afraid of his actions right now, so if you could just, if you could just stay near me? Thank you.
Classy. This is gorgeous. Hey, see you walking out with me?
Hi, I'm Diane.
Are you the one in the township remilage?
Yes, thank you, it would be impressive. It would have been easier to have you here and answer this question we had last night.